I'll ask the commissioners that are in the audience just to stay where you are. Don't get, don't come up here yet. And the reason why, before I call the meeting to order, I think this is very appropriate. Most of you that come regularly know that there is someone missing tonight that has always been here in that seat right there. Jean Clark was not only someone that we all expected to see, she was a person that always came with candy. She circulated, making sure that each of us had candy up here. She passed away Friday. And so what we're doing tonight is, in honor of her, we have her chair draped in black, we have a flower there, and we have candy. So before we start the meeting, I would like to ask each of you, in memory of Jean Clark, and in a moment of silence, and knowing how much we're gonna miss her. Her sister is here this evening, Ms. Honeycutt's at the back. She came to represent Jean, but she had lots of friends. So I'm gonna ask at this time if you will get yourself a piece of candy in memory of Jean, and then we'll open the meeting.
Sister, I was her favorite.
She would always lose out to that.
And she gave candy to one in all, so feel free. I've already picked mine up.
I'm doing well. I didn't make a good time.
What's my name?
I'm John.
You changed schools, gave me the gift of love. I took my little friend, she remember the freedom, freedom camp. And I called her out last week. He's new to that school now.
Yeah, how you doing, sir?
The kid in here, three.
I do a whole lot, but it could be a go. I do a good job. After my seven and Sunday. Three hours.
Have you stopped blotting out?
Yeah, she's on. I think we're gonna get a tape. She gets out of there.
My neck.
I just got back an hour ago.
That's what they do.
Okay.
Oh, I know, sir.
She always brought baby over.
And we know that our veterans, VFW, which she was, she was so involved with the auxiliary, that they are gonna plan a memorial service, and there'll be that, it will be announced as soon as we have those details. But I'm sure you'll miss her, and know that I've been mayor since 2011, and there's been very few nights that she wasn't sitting right there in that seat. So, at this time, I'll call our meeting to order. We're glad that you could be here with us this evening. We have with us this evening Pastor Wesley Holmes from Hope Mills Church of God to lead us in our invocation, which will be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all, please rise at this time.
Let us pray. Lord, we come before you this evening. Lord, we thank you for each one that is in this room. Lord, for each one that has shown interest in being here tonight. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for our mayor, and for our board of commissioners. Lord, that you would lead and guide them this evening. Lord, that you would give them wisdom and direction. For, Lord, we love this town of Hope Mills, and we thank you, Lord, for your direction. Lord, and when we leave here tonight, Lord, that you would be pleased with each decision that is made. Lord, that would bring glory and honor unto your name. Lord, each group that's represented here, each one that may speak. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for their opinion, Lord, and for their thoughts. And, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for how you will direct them as well. And, Lord, we give this time to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to remove, under New Business, Item F and Item G. And the reason I'd like to have them removed is because there were, over the past week, there's been a number of email exchanges that has definitely cleared up a lot of the issues regarding both of those. And I believe the emails has resolved any issues that were outstanding. So I'd like to have them both removed.
Have a motion, have a second.
Just move.
Have a motion, a second. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those two things moved, removed, F and G, off of New Business?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Have a motion, have a second.
A second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Each month, each, every other month, what we do is, we have the honor to recognize one of our special people in Hope Mills that volunteer their time and their service. And this evening, I think it's very appropriate that the gentleman that we're going to recognize, he took upon himself to become our organizer, one that put things together, so that we could get our mayor's, our mayors, not mayors, our pastoral coalition back together and get it working. And what has happened is, he is a young pastor, got a family that depends on him, but he has taken on, taken it on and said that, yes, he'll meet with them, he'll make sure that we have someone here, and he'll make sure that our community, especially our religious community, all churches in Hope Mills, stay informed of what's happening in Hope Mills. So, at this time, I'd like to present Volunteer of the Month to Pastor Wesley Holmes, in recognition of all he's doing for Hope Mills. I also now have a special recognition for a special student, and this is Gerald McKeechie. Gerald is a student at Village Christian Academy with a perfect 4-0 GPA for the entire school year. He is a top reader with most accelerated reading points two years in a row. He's the reigning champion for the spelling bee for his age group out of ten private schools, and over sixty students in the ACSI Association of Christian Schools International. He is elected secretary for the Prince Hall Mason's 9th of Pythagoras, Pythias East Freedom Council Number Thirty-One, and he's a greeter at Simon Temple. And this says, Certificate of Recognition Presented to Gerald McKeechie Jr. in recognition of your presentation during the Twenty-seventh Annual Martin Luther King Jr. Prayer Breakfast. And we're so glad that, not only does he represent us well in the classroom, but he also represents us well at a special event on a special day. So if you'll please come forward, and come with your family, and I'll present you this special certificate.
Gerald. Gerald. Okay. So welcome, let's get right here. Somebody wanna take a picture for the family?
Yeah.
They're big fagels. Come on up, ladies. Y'all always contribute to this young man success. He's gonna say his speech for us. Can we use that mic? That might work. We better use it. I thought it was that one. Yeah. I think I can say. I can be any better. How about that? Say that, say. Okay.
I'll use this one, sir.
You can come up here if you want, say these one days. Come on, man. Come on, man. Yeah, come on. Right there. There you go, nut.
Okay.
All we say to America is be true to what you said on paper. If I lived in China or even Russia or any totalitarian country, maybe I could understand some of these illegal injunctions. Maybe I could understand the naught of some basic First Amendment privileges because they hadn't committed themselves to that over there. But somewhere away of the freedom of assembly, somewhere away of the freedom of speech, somewhere away of the freedom of press, somewhere away that the greatness of America is right to protest for rights. And so just as I say, we aren't gonna let any dogs or waters turn us around, we aren't gonna let any injunction turn us around. Well, I know what happened now. We've got some difficult days ahead, but it was mad for me now because I've been to the mountaintop. And I don't mind. Like anybody, I'd like to live a long life. Longevity has its place, but I'm not concerned about that now. I just wanna do God's will, and He's allowed me to go up to the mountain. And I've looked over, and I've seen the promised land. I may not get there with Him, but I want you to know tonight that we, as a people, will get to the promised land. And so I'm happy tonight, I'm not worried about anything, I'm not fearing anyone. My eyes have seen the glory of the coming of the Lord.
Great job.
Did you just follow that little man? Which step?
Great job. Thank you for coming and being part of our meeting this evening. Next, we have our public comment time, and we have, for public comments this evening, we have Mr. Ron Maury.
My name's Ron Maury, forty-seven fifty-three, Legion Road, Hope Mills. It's been a long time since I've been up here, because when y'all ran for office, I promised two people in this room and my wife I would behave. I was released to that on election night. I've been kinda watching what's going on. One thing I need to straighten out, for some reason, there's some people in this town that are wondering what's on my voter registration card. I heard it down there when we were volunteering at the middle school. Of course, they were behind me, not in front of me. I would've told them, 'cause it's not classified, and I wouldn't have had to shoot them. I am not a Democrat. I am not a Republican. I go by the title of American. And I paid for that title with my blood more than once. I do not believe in political parties, and I've never asked any of you all what party you belong to. I go by what you do. Now, it comes down to the hog killing. Since you all have taken over, the atmosphere in these meetings have done a hundred and eighty degrees. You guys have shown professionalism, and the hatred that was here before has disappeared. A lot of people say, why do I show up all the time at these meetings? The VA classified me as useless. I'm not allowed to work, so I gotta do something. Plus, I love this town. I came to this town to die. I'm two-hundred-and-twenty percent disabled. The government killed me in Vietnam with Agent Orange. I'm dying of Agent Orange, just like Jim Clark did. I know my wife would be safe here, because we have not really beer-drinking friends, but we got people that care in this town. And that's why we moved here, 'cause we, I just love this area. The first day we moved here, I had twelve people help me unload a pot. I had no idea who their name was. I moved fifty-three times. That's the first time that's ever happened. I just wanna give you guys a natterboy. Will you ever make everybody happy? No. The day you can make everybody happy, we'll run outside, there'll be a herd of hogs flying over, half of them singing Dixie, and the other half singing the Battle Hymn of the Republic. Y'all are doing great, just keep the job going.
Thank you, sir. Next, is there any item on our consent agenda that you would like to move to New Business? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda that's before you?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, have a second?
Motion.
Have a motion, a second? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. New Business, the first thing on New Business is Case Number Twenty dash oh-one-seven, Consideration of the Liberty Point MIP Site Plan Review, Hope Mills Zoning Ordinance Zone MIP, acreage thirty point fourteen, located at fifty-three hundred, fifty-three sixty, and fifty-four thirty, Corporation Drive, submitted by Windsor Commercial Developer and Four D Site Solutions Engineer. And I'll turn this over to Chancellor, Mr. McLaughlin.
Hello, Madam Mayor, distinguished board members. As stated, this is Case Twenty dash oh-one-seven, which is a site plan approval request. With this area view, you can see the subject property outlined in yellow along Corporation Drive with I-95 bordering to the north. And as it relates to background, the subject property in question is addressed as fifty-three hundred, fifty-three sixty, and fifty-four thirty, Corporation Drive, and is tied to an overall seventy-seven-plus acre tract that was rezoned from heavy commercial and planned commercial to M-one-P, which is your planned light industrial district by the Board on June third, twenty nineteen. Since that time, the Plan Review Committee at Town Hope Mills has met several times with the developers to facilitate the submission of the development of the site. The developers proposing an industrial flex office space and plans to build the project in phases, as reflected on the submitted site plan. Although the proposed site plan shows three industrial structures, building number one is proposed for Phase One development. The overall site has approximately twenty-nine hundred-plus acres, I meant twenty-nine hundred-plus feet of frontage along Corporation Drive, with about twenty-six hundred feet of frontage along Interstate ninety-five to the rear. The proportion, this portion of the site proposed for development is thirty point one-four acres, with approximately a hundred and thirty-five parking spaces proposed for building one. What you see here is the proposed site plan. As you can see, building one is to the far west of the site, and future building two and future building three will come in later phases. But we have actually met with this group extensively at our Plan Review Committee, and there are additional blowups of the site plan located in your package. But I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
Yeah, at this time, does any of the commissioners have a question for Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Lay.
Is there only three buildings to be built on that tract?
The entire development, yes. But just to put things in scale, the entire development is seventy-seven acres. Building one is four acres in size. So this is a pretty large facility. I think all three buildings are at least an acre, above an acre, in size of the building. But they actually met very extensively with our, my departments, Stormwater Public Works, PWC, Fire. So everything you see before us tonight is something that has been vetted through all our departments, and we're just doing what we do to facilitate the submission of it. They should be permitting pretty soon, but we may have one or two meetings with them prior to them officially submitting for permitting. But everything you see before us, you tonight, is something that we've actually vetted pretty extensively.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
May I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Chancellor, I assume that these three tracts of property is gonna be clear-cut. Am I correct? Is the property gonna be clear-cut?
I think it's already been cleared.
Pretty much?
Yes. That's been cleared for quite some time.
So what's the plan for the landscaping and the planting of trees?
What you see?
In accordance, in accordance with our ordinance?
What you see down here, just to the far bottom of the blowup of proposed one, would be the meeting of the landscaping requirements for this tract. So what'll happen is, as they actually proceed with building two, they wouldn't have to come back before the Board, because they're getting approval of all three, but they will have to submit a revised site plan to show the landscape requirements being met for building two, and they have to come back to do that for building three as well. So what you see here is them meeting the landscaping requirements for proposed building one, which is Phase One of development.
Yeah, okay, 'cause you just answered the follow-up question. 'Cause that, my follow-up was, were they gonna have to do that for each of the buildings?
Yes, yes. So what happens now is, they could've shown all of that for the entire development, but this is the approval of the entire site, but each submiddle of building two, just to show the landscape requirements, it wouldn't require them to come back to the Board, but they will have to submit a revised site plan at staff level, to the county, and to myself as well. So there is still are mechanisms in place to make sure they meet those landscape requirements for the future phases of development.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chancellor.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to say thank you to you and the county staff, for, I know this had to take a lot of time and effort to put together. So thank you very much for that.
Yes, ma'am. Can I make a motion? Uh-huh. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of Case Twenty dash zero-one-seven, Liberty Point Site Plan. Have a motion, have a second? Have a motion, a second? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next, we have Consideration of Execution of an Agreement with NCDOT, tied to a matching grant program for the creation of a pedestrian plan and approval of the Associated Budget Ordinance Amendment, Budget Amendment Number Twenty Twenty dash twelve. The Board approved the grant submission on July fifteenth, twenty nineteen. A budget amendment for twelve thousand dollars, twenty percent matching funds, to cover the town's portion of the project is attached. The pedestrian planning grant for forty-eight thousand dollars will cover the remaining cost from the total project of sixty thousand. And I'll turn this over to Mr. McLaughlin to give you an overview.
As Mayor Warner stated, we got authority from you guys in July of last year to apply for the grant award, or for the actual application. The award came through, I think, around December. And what you have before you now is just the agreement that lies, locks in the terms and conditions of our twelve thousand dollar matching funds, but it's also something where this is for a pedestrian plan. So this is not for construction, but because of the nature of the way the plan is, the grant is set up, NCDOT is doing all the heavy lifting, they're selecting the consultant for us. They're basically just needing us to facilitate the public meetings, and they need us to form a steering committee, which is what we're doing right now. So there's really, really nothing else for us to do, other than this is us, the agreement that locks in our commitment for the grant. But just to throw an idea out there, we're toying around with is, we're talking to PWC to possibly identify locations of easements through the neighborhood, across the street, and on the backside of the golf course, to see if we can kinda formulate a route of a greenway that makes a connection on the backside through the neighborhood to Trey Street, the lake, and the golf course. So that's what we will pitch to the consulting firm as our focus of the pedestrian plan. But just to let you know, this is a grant for a pedestrian plan. This is the agreement that ties in our matching funding for that particular grant award.
Any questions, any concerns? Do I have a motion to approve? Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion recommending approval of this request for the site plan review. And can I also approve the budget amendment with this? Yeah, you can do it together. Can I do it together?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'd also like to approve the budget amendment for twelve thousand dollars, which would be twenty percent of the matching funds, and the total project cost is sixty thousand.
Second.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, the budget amendment's actually in the amount of sixty thousand. Forty-eight for the.
Forty-eight for that, but the total was sixty thousand.
Twelve for our matching funds.
Okay.
Just a second.
All right. Have, we have a motion to, for the total cost of sixty thousand dollars, with our cost is twelve thousand. Have a motion, a second? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next, we have Consideration of Passing Resolution, R Twenty Twenty dash oh-three, fixing a public hearing date of March the second, twenty twenty, for annexation of Twenty Twenty oh-one, Caliber Collision. Have a motion, do I have a second? Second. Have a motion, a second? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next, is Consideration of Passing Resolution, Twenty Twenty dash oh-four, in support of a grant application to the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund to construct Phase One of Heritage Park. There's no additional cost for submitting the grant application, but the town can apply design expenditures in the amount of forty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars for the master plan toward its dollar-to-dollar match requested grant funding. I'll turn it over to Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. In your package, you should have a copy of the resolution that I hope you will pass. But one of the things I did want to bring to your attention, one of the directives that came out of your recent retreat was, you want a timeline for the Partef grant. So you should have a copy of a comprehensive list of documents that we'll need leading up to the first submission, which is April the first. A few of these things I want to make you aware of tonight. Some have already been done. For instance, we have to do a series of presentations to civic groups. One that I completed tonight was the Coalition with the Mayor's Youth Coalition. But we have to get three to four letters of support. So that's one document we'll, we'll need. My goal is to have all of these letters by, no later than February the twenty-fifth. In your hands, you should have the, the letter of assurances to be signed by the mayor, and also the motion that I hope you'll pass tonight. These are all documents that have to be submitted with the, the first submission, April first. Along with the staff presentations, there'll also be a adoption on March the sixth, during your, during the, the budget retreat, the final master plan that will need to be adopted. So all of these things will have to be done by April first to submit. One, one other piece that we're gonna need is the adoption of a CIP, or an amended CIP to specifically name Heritage Park and commit to a match. And so right now, we're looking at a three-hundred-thousand-dollar match, because we intend to ask for three hundred dollars of, three hundred thousand dollars of funding from the Partef Grant. So I ask any question you may have.
Does anyone have a question for Mr. Mar?
Commander Mayor.
Yes, sir?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to make the motion.
All right.
For passing Resolution Twenty Twenty oh-four, in support of a grant application to the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund to construct Phase One of Heritage Park.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, have a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next, is Consideration of Passing Resolution, Twenty Twenty dash oh-four, in support of a grant application to the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund to construct Phase One of Heritage Park. There's no additional cost for submitting the grant application, but the town can apply design expenditures in the amount of forty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars for the master plan toward its dollar-to-dollar match requested grant funding. I'll turn it over to Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. In your package, you should have a copy of the resolution that I hope you will pass. But one of the things I did want to bring to your attention, one of the directives that came out of your recent retreat was, you want a timeline for the Partef grant. So you should have a copy of a comprehensive list of documents that we'll need leading up to the first submission, which is April the first. A few of these things I want to make you aware of tonight. Some have already been done. For instance, we have to do a series of presentations to civic groups. One that I completed tonight was the Coalition with the Mayor's Youth Coalition. But we have to get three to four letters of support. So that's one document we'll, we'll need. My goal is to have all of these letters by, no later than February the twenty-fifth. In your hands, you should have the, the letter of assurances to be signed by the mayor, and also the motion that I hope you'll pass tonight. These are all documents that have to be submitted with the, the first submission, April first. Along with the staff presentations, there'll also be a adoption on March the sixth, during your, during the, the budget retreat, the final master plan that will need to be adopted. So all of these things will have to be done by April first to submit. One, one other piece that we're gonna need is the adoption of a CIP, or an amended CIP to specifically name Heritage Park and commit to a match. And so right now, we're looking at a three-hundred-thousand-dollar match, because we intend to ask for three hundred dollars of, three hundred thousand dollars of funding from the, the Partef grant. So I ask any question you may have.
Does anyone have a question for Mr. Mar?
Commander Mayor.
Yes, sir?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to make the motion.
All right.
For passing Resolution Twenty Twenty oh-four, in support of a grant application to the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund to construct Phase One of Heritage Park.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, have a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed.
It's about time we got this part of the.
It's about time we got this part of the...
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Behind us.
Yeah. Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Lamarcus, that was an excellent timeline, by the way. Thanks for constructing that. That's excellent. It's easy to read, to follow, and it gives us benchmarks as we go through the process. Well done.
The next item on the agenda is discussion regarding social media pages belonging to Hope Mills Mayor Jackie Warner, Hope Mills Mayor Pro Tim Kenwanna McCray, and Hope Mills Commissioner Brian Marley. And this was requested by Commissioner Bellflowers, and I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner Bellflowers.
Thank you, Mayor. Main reason I added it to the agenda is because of a complaint letter from a citizen that I received on February 7th, and I forwarded it to the town manager and copied the town attorney for it. Since then, I believe the complaint letter has been answered. And in the packet tonight, there are several documents in here that addresses social media and individual Facebook accounts. I don't think I have to describe, in my viewpoint, how social media has become the wild, wild west of just reckless comments. There are the good, the bad, and the ugly. It truly is. I don't know what the process is to govern Facebook accounts. I don't have an official elected Facebook account. I have just a personal one. But I noticed that Dan's remark was that the town had determined that the town of Hope Mills has no jurisdiction or control over the elected officials' Facebook pages. The pages in question are not administered by any staff, nor do any staff member have access to or any authority over these pages. They are administered by the individuals themselves. As such, I would not have any jurisdiction or ability to investigate any complaints about those Facebook pages. And that came from you, Dan. And I thought that was, that was captured quite well. I think that was spot on with the, with the liability of the town. I would just like to ask that we just be a little more respective in what we read or post. And I know my family has been involved, and I have asked them to clean it up. And I'm asking everyone here, clean it up. It's not who we are, doesn't represent our community, and it's flat, and I can't say the word, blank ugly.
Thank you, Mayor.
As Mayor of Hope Mills, in 2014, I opened up a Facebook page because at that time there was a concern for transparency. There was no way of communicating to our town. We did not have a website, and we did not have a presence on social media. So I set up the Mayor's of Hope Mills Facebook page. It was not in the same realm as my personal page. It was completely for Hope Mills. From 2014 until about 2018, that page has served us well. There's been mostly questions. Sometimes I get private messages as far as concerns, whether it be a pothole, it be somebody's trash not being picked up. But it's also been a link to how to get in touch with town officials too, because as we privatized trash and other things, that was good for information. The past year, and especially within the past, since we filed for reelection in July, my Facebook page has become a source of ridicule, derogatory remarks, and chastising me for whatever reason. It has attacked my family, it has attacked me. I have maintained and have stayed above it. You have found, if you check that, if you checked that page, that very rarely did you see me comment back. I just continued to post those things that were important to the town. I did contact, did contact someone in reference to, what can you do? And what I can do is what I've done. The Facebook page that was put there for information for the town is no longer needed. We have a presence on social media with every department, from our police and fire, to Parks and Rec, to our administrative page, to our developmental department. So all the information that I was providing is now being taken care of by the town. We also have a very active website, and we now have Parks and Recs where you can actually pay and apply for different things on that site. So I did take my page down. I have not blocked anyone, I have not deleted anyone. I, I did find a set, a setting on there that you could put community, in which that meant that until I approved the post, the community could make all the posts they wanted to, and that's what I have used the past week. However, now there is no mayor's page, and there will not be a mayor's page. Anything that the mayor needs, the mayor will do through the administrative page of the town. And any, would you like, Mayor Pro Tim or Commissioner Marley, would you like to comment?
My page has always been used to post positive information. I never engage in any type of derogatory comments or share any type of stories that is derogatory or shameful for this town. Last week, my page became so nasty and embarrassing and derogatory, I had to take my page down as well. I'll communicate all of my information on my personal Facebook page, which has a large following. So I took mine down because I can't have a commissioner page because I'm attached to too many organizations in this community. I'm a mentor for several children, I'm a parent first mo, first and foremost, and I didn't want them exposed to that information that was on that page. So I have taken my page down as well.
Commissioner Marley? You don't have to comment, it's just...
I think y'all covered everything pretty good. I appreciate Commissioner Bellflowers' comments on that. And, you know, I just ready to move on.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
If you don't, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Mister Attorney, is there any other activities that may be going on that we may be on the watch out for any potential problems?
Well, I'm not entirely sure what you're asking there, but what I, what I can say is that the restrictions that the Fourth Circuit found as far as deleting or blocking posts on, on social media applied only if you open your page up to public comments. If you do open your page up to public comments, you can't engage in viewpoint discrimination and delete or block posts based on the content of the, of the post or the comment made. There's not a requirement that you actually open it up to comments, as long as you're doing whatever you do across the board and not based on, you know, the content of the speech. I don't see any issues. So as, as long as you're not deleting or blocking comments or posts based on their content, I don't see any issues.
Okay. I think you don't have to worry about me doing that because I don't know how to do it. I'm lost.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Well, and that's, and that's good to know, Dan, because the citizen's letter, that was part of what the citizen's letter was, was about. It was, they, the citizen claimed that they had been routinely blocked, deleted, comments hidden, other people because they criticized their decisions. That's, so that's, that's really good to, that's really good to know. Because I mean, I'm reading it right directly from...
Okay. That should have probably been sent to our town manager for our town manager to do the investigation. And also, I will tell you that what has been on my pages had been nothing to do with decisions I've made, with decisions the board made, and some of the comments have been quite, not only derogatory, but very slanderous. And so it was necessary for my page to come down, and it's down. I regretfully had to do that, but I just do not feel it's fair to the citizens of Hope Mills to have to, to witness what was taking place. And also, people that were making nice comments were being attacked for making nice comments. So, and I can take the page down, I can unpublish it, as long as there's another source for what I was providing. And we do have, thanks to our town staff, we do have those sources available.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I believe if we'd all worked together on trying to celebrate the good things that we do instead of criticizing a few bad ones, I think Hope Mills would be a whole lot better place to live. Be a whole lot better place to communicate with your neighbors and your friends. We have too many good, nice things going on in this town for us to have to look to the side to see this kind of stuff. So I'm proud of all three of you for speaking up. Thank you very much.
Anything else in reference to item E? If not, next we have on the agenda, the manager's report. Did you want to?
I have just two items, Madam Mayor. Thank you. In honor of Black History Month, we are displaying five pieces of art that are part of Black History Cultural Art Experience exhibit. The artist is Yolanda Burce, and I'll just read a brief biography about Ms. Burce. Her award-winning works have been featured throughout Cumberland County for more than nine years, exhibiting her art, her first art piece in 2008 Food Show Art Exhibit. She was the first artist to exhibit with the Veterans Affairs Art Gallery. She has been awarded first and second place in various art categories with the Cumberland County Fair. Ms. Burce took second place in the 2016 Dickens Holiday Photography Contest. This is an out-of-the-box thinker and self-taught visual artist who has established her own lane on the Cumberland County art scene. She predominantly works in the art media of glass engraving, wood burning, and carving, as well as photography. She does not hesitate to try other art media for the fun of it. Her 2020 exhibit features mixed medium pieces, as well as oils, pastels, charcoal, pointillism, acrylic, and acrylic creations. Her art has also been featured in several local churches, elementary and high schools, and the 2018 African-American Economic Experience. She's also the first annual African-American Heritage Celebration Festival. She exhibited artwork during that. Ms. Burce recently donated original pieces for the second and third annual art auction, Home is Where the Heart Is. This event was hosted by Connection of Cumberland, and it was held to raise funds to help homeless children succeed. Also, she has had the honor of donating new pieces of art for the 112nd Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated Founder's Gala Silent Auction on December 1st, 2018. She is honored to have several pieces of her art residing in various locations in Fayetteville, but her biggest honor came over the summer when a student minister, Troy Muhammad, selected her Dr. Martin Luther King piece, which now hangs in an NOI mosque in Detroit, Michigan. She, as she continues to perfect her craft, she hopes her art and vision will bring a fresh perspective to art and inspire others to take an interest in some form of art. Her children are also flourishing artists. In 2016, her youngest child secured the title of the youngest artist ever to enter the Arts Council PWC Call for the Art Exhibit and was their Featured Artist of the Week. Ms. Burce aspires to ignite passion in people of all ages to create things that will highlight their own vision and philosophy. We've got two pieces in the back and three pieces on display in the front until the 28th of this month. And then I also wanted to bring attention to the fact that the Parks and Rec Center is hosting One Stop Voting, which began February the 13th and will conclude on the 29th. The hours are 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and Saturday, February the 29th, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Those times again, may I ask, you say eight?
Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And Saturday, February the 29th, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And there is a flyer for One Stop Voting, which is posted on our administration page.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ma'am?
Yes?
I got, I got a couple of questions on the manager.
Okay.
Um, I just had a couple of questions, Ms. Adams.
Yes.
I'd just, just curious, the fencing for the vacant lot, what, what kind of fencing are we talking about? Have y'all decided yet?
I believe it's four feet...
Six foot chain.
Six, or six foot, six foot chain length.
Is, um, I know it's probably temporary, right? Is that temporary, or is it going to be for good? Or if it's going to be permanent, I mean, if it's going to be something permanent, I'd like to see something other than chain link fence, like something that'll help with the landscaping when we do landscaping or whatever. I mean, something that might look a little better.
I think the idea was for it to be more temporary until we come up with a plan for, you know, that piece is supposed to be included into the Heritage Park Master Plan, and...
That's fine, I just wanted...
We can take a little bit, something more permanent.
Yeah.
There, there was a safety concern about the drop off, and that's what, that's what has brought on the idea of the fencing.
No problem, I was just curious.
Could we get a comparison for more decorative fence? Because if we're going to invest money in fencing, that's money that if we're going to take it down, it might be that it would, could be applied toward a more decorative-looking fence. Does there, I mean, there is some vinyl fencing that's, like, the little, looks like wrought iron, but it's not. That's just a thought.
I'll have to get with Public Works and see...
Okay.
The other, the other question, I had two more. The other question I had was, I know when we toured the chapel, I know you said they used the chapel this weekend. I don't know if everybody knew that, but they actually used the chapel this weekend for renewing some valves, wedding valves. But, um, I know, I know y'all mentioned about putting a timer on the lights so at night that the stained glass windows would be shown. Is there any, any word on that yet?
I don't believe we've gotten to that point yet.
And the repairs to the veterans monument, I know y'all have been, it says here y'all have been in contact with the company, and the repairs could be very costly, and they're going to bring it back at the budget retreat. When, when they talk to that company, can we find out if there's something we can do different to prevent this from happening again once they fix it? If it's going to be a lot to repair, like, is there any preventative maintenance that we can be doing all along the way so it doesn't get in that shape again? I would be interested to find out. Because that's a nice monument, I'd love to be there a long time, so. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone, any others? Okay, if not, we have, of course, all the reminders for all the upcoming meetings, and they are on the town website also. And we do have opportunity now for staff comments. Do we have anybody that has a comment? Start with Ms. Starling.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
So Mr. McLaughlin has been in contact with Jeff Adolphson concerning the state, you know, the board had, by consensus, decided at the last meeting to have a meeting on March the 2nd at 5:30 for the property owners in the historic district to learn about the tax credits and the different programs for, that would be available to them. Mr. McLaughlin's been in contact with Mr. Adolphson. He cannot come on March the 2nd. However, he can come March the 4th from 6:00 to 7:30. What he would like to do is he has a very comprehensive PowerPoint presentation that he is willing to come and present, and that is approximately from 6:00 to 7:00. And then 7:00 to 7:30 would be a question and answer period with Mr. Adolphson. So with your approval tonight and changing the date from... from March the 2nd to March the 4th at 6:00, we can mail out the invitations, not only to the property owners, but Mr. Adolphson said if we could invite the business owners as well.
Definitely.
We can mail that out tomorrow.
Does anybody up here have a problem with that date?
It's good with me.
Okay. So we have March 4th, that's a Wednesday.
March the 4th, beginning at 6:00, he said.
That work for you?
Is that Thursday?
So Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay. Commander Mayor, on the reminders, I do want to remind that the Rulak is having their quarterly meeting on the 20th at Grandson's.
I'm scheduled to be there, right?
And it wasn't on the list, I just wanted to, as a reminder, that the Rulak Quarterly Meeting is this week, the 20th.
Yeah, this Thursday morning.
Okay, do we have a motion to change that date for the property and the business owners of historical properties to meet Wednesday, March 4th, from 6:00 to 7:00?
I will enter a motion that we change the date from March 2nd to March 4th of 2020, for the property owners to meet from 6:00 to 7:30, and that'll be right here.
Okay, right here in the boardroom. So have a motion that we have the meeting March 4th between 6:00 and 7:30 for the property and business owners from the Trade Street or the Historic District area. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Now, staff comments. Ms. Starling, do you have something?
Yes. The NCLM City Vision 2020 will be taking place May 5th through 7th in Wilmington. And if you were interested in registering, just let me know. And as soon as they give us more information, like the agenda and so forth, I'll send it on to you. But I just wanted to let you know that that was coming.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anything else? Okay. Have anything? No. Okay, any official comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I may. I certainly like to say that Ms. Clark's gonna be dearly missed here. She became a, kind of a permanent fixture around this town for many, many years. And she's done not many good things, but a lot of great things for this town with her time. Never heard her make any negative comments. And I don't think you would. But I ask that everyone be in prayer for the family, and she's gonna be missed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commander Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I'd like to add to that as well, that our community is definitely gonna miss Jean Clark, as Jim. I served with Jean on a number of committees, but we also served together Veterans Foreign Wars here at the post level in Hope Mills, at the district level. When I was district commander, she was district president. And then at the state level, because she was state auxiliary president, not the same year that I was state commander. But she helped me tremendously during my year as state commander for the VFW, and Bill knows that, so does Greeley. And her advice, her mentorship, and her friendly personality will definitely be missed. And I just wanted to share that with the community. That monument out there is representative of her and Jim. And everything that, everything Veterans Affairs Committee, they started it. They, both of them, as a husband-and-wife team. It was started, founded by them. And if we continue that legacy, which I know we will for years to come, we continue that to honor their community service, because both of them dearly loved our community. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards, do you have anything?
I normally don't, but I will this time. I think Jean Clark has touched everybody's heart. She's touched every staff member and anybody that has known her. Jean has had a part in their life. And she will be missed, and she's up there angel waves, and she's telling Jim, everything's been going on down here, so you gotta be careful.
You have to tell him.
Oh, she took him in again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I would just like to send my condolences to Mrs. Clark's family and her friends, and thank you, Ms. McGee, for coming out tonight.
Yep, thank you so much for coming, good talking to you today too. And Jean was special to me, and especially Jean and Jim together, because they used to come, when I was a principal, to come to the school so that we could do the special speech contest. They'd make sure that our school not only was well-represented, but they would hound me to make sure I got some good writers out there. I think most important, though, is that I don't know of time that Jean hasn't kissed me on the cheek, told me she loved me, no matter where we were. So I miss that, but I do know she's in a better place. And I know that we'll miss her, but just know she's impacted each of us in a special way.
Commander Mayor, can I have one? This young man that stood up here today, tonight, and greeted us, he stood on a stage at the Crown the morning, and Ken Wanda was there, Mayor Pro Tem McCray, with the same voice that he used tonight. And there was hundreds of people at the Crown. I mean, this event gets larger and larger every year. And it took tremendous amount of courage for him to stand on that stage and recite those words. And what you saw tonight is exactly the same temperament and tone that he used in front of hundreds of people that he may not know, or may never know, that listened to him. And I think we owe him another round of applause before we- Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, son. At this time, also, I think we failed to mention the Valentine's event that was held with Parks and Rec this past, it happened Valentine's Day. A great luncheon, a great celebration. It was for 55 and over, and they had a great turnout, but they did, it was a great event. So I appreciate the staff for all the things you do, but especially when you have a turnout like you did, and it was a great event. Okay, well, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a closed session pursuant to NCGS 143, 3181186 to discuss a personnel matter.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. We will be going to the front conference room, we beg your patience. And again, we appreciate everyone's attendance this evening.
It's not meant to be funny, it was a present.
At this time, I'll call our meeting back to order. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would like a motion to accept the contract, or vote on the contract in an open session.
And just seal the minutes.
And to seal the minutes. And to seal the minutes, the release of the information will no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session, and further, no action was taken.
Okay. And we have renewed Ms. Adams' contract. Do I have a motion to accept the contract that we've gone over at this time?
Motion to accept.
Have a motion to accept, have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Welcome aboard for another year, Ms. Adams. Thank you. And is there any other motions?
My turn.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, have a second?
Second.
Everybody, good night.